I think it's a great report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, I'd like to invite up Graham Mitchell.
So, Mr. Mayor, I heard that it was difficult to hear from where I was sitting, so I'll just speak from the podium if that's okay with you.
That's great.
So, I should go to the next slide. So, last month, it's important to note that the US Congress and the President adopted a Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or referred to as CARES. And that's really the way that there's a stimulus package that's going to affect a lot of individuals in our community, but also include some money that will be coming to the City of El Cajon. It'll be coming to the city in the form of an augmentation of our CDBG money, our Community Development Block money. And that money will also have a lot of the same parameters and regulations and rules that our current CDBG money has. And in fact, we would be required, if we were to spend this money on anything different than we're currently spending it on, we'll have to actually go back and amend the city's 2019, 2020 CDBG action plan. So, we will plan on doing that based on, or depending on, the type of feedback we get from the City Council at today's agenda item. So, I just wanted the council to be aware that there's about $800,000 of this augmented money that will come to us specifically to help individuals typically of low-income households. Go to the next slide. So, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that we've been doing since the announcement of the pandemic. We have upgraded our website. If you go to, and Chief Swain, you mentioned this, but if you go to the front of our website, there's a red banner. Click on that. It has a lot of resources. We've tried not to reinvent the wheel. We are not the experts. We don't have health professionals that work for us, except for our fire department. So, we rely on county health department and CDC data. And so, we have a lot of those resources all culled together in one location. So, we encourage people to go there. It has the latest and the greatest, and avoid any rumors by going there. The other thing that we've done is we've kept City Hall open. Even though we're not open to the public at all of our levels within City Hall, we're currently helping customers in the lobby. We help a lot of our customers through the Internet, on phone. As I mentioned earlier in this evening's meeting, we can submit, contractors and homeowners can submit plans through our PACO program. And so, we're still reviewing plans, providing all the services that we have been, because we consider ourselves an essential service. We also have installed nine handwashing stations provided by the County of San Diego throughout the city. We've placed those in places that are of high-impact or high-trafficked areas. We've tried to buoy people's well-being through our recreation squad. And if we go to the next slide, we've really been trying to engage our community. So, the squad drives around in a really brightly-colored orange van. We recently did a hopscotch contest where we put, how many hopscotch?
100.
108 hopscotches in front of people's homes, where they could go out and, with appropriate fiscal distancing, do some hopscotching. We have a plethora of videos on YouTube, on our YouTube channel. So, you can see one individual showing how to play frisbee, tic-tac-toe. And then, we also did an art class of how to do watercolor, some basic watercolor. So, there's a lot of different activities, so no one can say they're bored and have nothing to do. Just go to YouTube and search for City of El Cajon Recreation Department, and you'll get a lot of different videos. Next slide. We've taken a lot of the county videos that are in a lot of different languages. However, one of the languages that they were not in is Arabic. And so, using some local talent, we actually did some Arabic voiceover, and the county's used that video voiceover. So, we've been able to add Arabic video to the other videos, Spanish, Tagalog, Vietnamese, and other languages on the county website. So, we've been able to provide our services there. We've held a virtual town hall meeting, hosting our mayor. We've had, this will be our third council meeting that we've held virtually. We're having a planning commission meeting next Tuesday. We'll be holding that virtually. We have offered to be a place where the county can do drive-through testing when that comes available. And then, we've also, and I'm going to focus on this a little bit more for the rest of my presentation, we've created within our city organization three response teams, or hot teams. One is focusing on impacts that our residents are experiencing. We're also focusing on impacts that our business community is experiencing, and then a team that's focused on our homeless community. So, we'll talk about that in just a minute. If you go to the next slide. So, I wanted to general, just very, very lightly touch on some impacts to the city. Our Finance Director covered a lot of that, but we know that there's going to be some general fund impacts because of COVID-19 with our businesses shut down. We know it'll impact sales tax revenue. Our Finance Director talked about deferred sales tax payments. We think that there'll be an impact there. I read one study that that could be as much as $1 million. We'll eventually get that money, but that is a lot of money for the City of El Cajon. We think it'll also have a long-term impact on property tax. We think there's going to be vacancy rates in our commercial corridors, potentially in our residential neighborhoods. And so, that's going to have an impact on property tax, and of course, our transient occupancy tax. We're noticing a decline in that as well. As our Finance Director also talked about, we'll be seeing some impacts to our pension costs. So, we're anticipating those costs. Mr. McClellan, encourage staff to sharpen the pencil. I'll let you know, council, what we've done so far. We haven't done anything drastic. We haven't had authorization to do that. But we have slowed down any hiring process. We've actually not hired anybody unless they're in the public safety. We've actually had to let go some of our temporary part-time staff, and we've put them on leave. We've cut back a lot of our hourly staff hours in anticipation of some budget hardships to come. And as we prepare the budget, we're well into it, but as we continue to prepare, you should expect some additional cuts to our budget. Go to the next slide. So, earlier, I talked about some of the things that we're doing internally, and part of that is creating this, these response teams. And we've been looking at what are, what do we think are some of the short-term and long-term impacts that we're going to have to our business community, to our neighborhoods, to our residences? We really believe that with our nonessential businesses closed, there is going to be a short-term impact, of course, but potentially a long-term impact. And we really believe that our small businesses, the mom-and-pop businesses, especially the nonessential ones, will struggle, if even come back at all. We also worry about the viability of Parkway Plaza. We don't know, we already know that there's some structural shifts occurring in the marketplace before this occurred. We know that a lot of big-box stores are closing down and consolidating. We think that this will probably expedite some of those movements in the market. I think the longer we stay in the current state that we're in, the more structural changes that we'll see. I think that our city's prepared to deal with long-term structural changes, but if those all happen in one fiscal year, that makes it a little bit more challenging from a land-use perspective. So, these are some things that we're thinking about a lot over the last few weeks. We know that a lot of our residents are either experiencing unemployment or underemployment. They're not getting the hours that they used to have. And so, that's going to have an impact on the ability to generate sales, consumer confidence, and potentially impact on homelessness, and also the ability to pay rent and to pay mortgages. We also worry about just the well-being of our children. And we have amazing schools and school districts that represent our kids, but we know, I can speak from firsthand experience, my kids don't get as good of an education from me and my wife as they do from their teachers, and they miss school. And I think that their quality of education will be declining. And I think that we'll be seeing that across the state of California and across the world over this next semester. So, it's a concern that we have, and we've been thinking about what are, what's the city's responsibility in that? We've been doing a lot of coordinating with our school districts, and we continue to do, we plan on continuing to do that. Next slide. So, let me talk about these response teams really quickly. We've asked each of the response teams, the resident response team, the business response team, and the homeless response team, to identify the top three challenges that they see in these different groups, and then to generate some recommendations. And so, I'm going to just go over the challenges, highlight the recommendations, then I'll dive into the recommendations a little bit more deeper when we look at the budget. So, for the resident response team, the three big challenges are income of our residents being affected by unemployment, the physical and mental wellness of our residents, and also access to food and to housing. We've come up with six proposals that we'd like to present. We'd like to recommend that we consider not charging late fees on our utility bills through the end of 2020, so through, all the way through December. We currently aren't charging late fees right now, and we planned on doing that during this billing transition, but we would actually recommend extending that out through the rest of the year. We'd also recommend delaying bills in the months, the remainder months of April and May to not be sent out. But we would add those bills to future months, and it would expect those funds to be paid. But that would give our residents a bit of a break during this period of underemployment and until the stimulus checks arrive. We'd also recommend that we create a utility assistance program that could help with any utilities. And the goal of that is to help really put money into people's hands so they can pay rent and pay for food. It's just a way to defray some of the costs that they have. We would recommend that we continue to provide free online recreation classes. I know there's some places that are doing this in the private sector. There's other opportunities to generate money. We don't think this is an, this is a time to look for money generation opportunities, but to push for more free online classes, and more than just the videos we've been doing now, but more structured classes. We think that there's some opportunities to create some food delivery for our seniors. We know there's some private sector or some nonprofit programs out there that we'd like to, that we think that we should be supporting. We worry about food security in our community. We know that there are about six food distributions that occur at different locations any given time. We'd like to take a more active role in promoting those throughout the community and through our website. And then, after COVID-19 pandemic is over and we return to some semblance of normalcy, we know that disposable income will be a bit of a challenge. So, we'd like to actually figure out a way to offer some discounts to recreation programs, and if even possible, to other youth sports leagues. It's an area that we're exploring right now. Go to the next slide. The business response team identified actually four challenges. One is lost revenue that businesses are experiencing because of the shutdown, business closures once the distancing limits are lifted, the safety of employees, and also layoffs. It's going to be a structural change with a lot of businesses, and it's hard to lay off employees. So, we think those are four areas of challenges that we see. We don't have as many resources to help businesses because we can't use CARES funds for those, but we thought of three different recommendations. One, we think that we can become this deposit of business resources. There's a lot of different information coming from the state, from the federal government, from nonprofits. We think that we could be a place where all that information can be provided on a website. We'd like to work with our local chambers of commerce. And then, we'd also like to actually go out with our teams and go out and directly contact businesses one by one, and so, they know that we're here for them and do a lot of hands-on approach with that. We'd also like to, the council to consider waiving business, or late business license fees, or any late fees relating to business licenses. And then, we would also apply the no late fees for sewer to businesses as well. And then, lastly, we'd like to soften regulations relating to banners and to temporary uses. We know that as businesses are currently operating in this environment where restaurants only have takeout, we think that having a banner would be appropriate at this time. And we know as businesses get back into going, we probably need to have some relaxed regulations about them trying to get going. So, we'd like to encourage, we'd like, we'd propose that we actually soften our regulations in there temporarily. Lastly, we have a homeless response team. We identified the three big challenges, a shelter, hygiene, and frankly, the risk of additional homelessness in our community. So, we have three programs that we want to talk about. One is we'd like to allocate some funding from the CARES money for additional shelter space. That could be in the form of secured shelters. It could be in the form of hotel vouchers or motel vouchers. And it could also include a safe parking program temporarily during this period of time. We also know that the state of California has put a lot of resources into homeless services. Those resources are being managed by the San Diego Regional Task Force on Homelessness. We have no control over those funds. We know a lot of those resources are being allocated to areas outside of the City of El Cajon. And we know that we have a homeless community that would like to access those. So, we think there's some value in us being a conduit to get some of our population that would like to access those services, to those services through transportation. In order to address our fear of people becoming homeless, we'd like to allocate, or recommend allocating money to either a rapid rehousing program and a combination of some rental assistance before people do become homeless. We would recommend working with a nonprofit to help administer those funds to keep people into their homes. Go to the next slide. In addition to the staff's recommendations, we presented a bunch of them. Council members have also approached staff with some ideas, and I'd like to present those at this time. And after I'm done maybe with this slide, if council members want to chime in and talk about some of, maybe elaborate a little bit more of what I was talking about. The mayor has expressed some concerns about food security in our community. We have food programs for school-age children. We have food programs for seniors, but there's a big gap in the middle. And so, we thought that the city helping to, helping some existing programs in our community help to provide more food for our community would be a worthwhile thing. And we would recommend supporting some of the organizations that are already doing this fantastic work and continue to ensure that they have funding to help our residents. Council members Goble and Kendrick express some concern about rent increases, and also the impact that landlords are going to have during this period of time, especially until the stimulus checks arrive. And so, they have presented a resolution that would strongly discourage landlords from increasing rent during this period of time, from April until May, but also encourage tenants to be proactive in reaching out to landlords and expressing their financial struggles and challenges, so landlords can prepare for, make some contingency plans, so they can also ensure that their bills are paid, that their mortgages are paid. Lastly, council member Ortiz has contacted us about his work that he's been doing with the East County Chamber of Commerce. There's currently not a request for funding or specifically a city action at this time, but he's worked with them to get a survey out that will ask a lot of our businesses what their status is, how are they doing, do they plan on reopening? And it'd be, I think prudent for this council to have a look at that data once it's available. And so, I would actually recommend that we bring that as a separate agenda item back, or cobble together with other items in the future as that data's available. At this time, council members, do you have any additional comments about the three council-directed proposals?
Yes. I would like to know what we're doing about code compliance. We loosen that up a little bit to where we aren't threatening people and fining them, and maybe just asking for their cooperation on code compliance issues, unless it's a safety issue where they need to address it immediately, and maybe we could help them find a solution for those issues.
So, certainly, Mr. McClellan, that's something that we'd look for some council direction on. I think I said this earlier, just from a policy perspective, you should be aware that we are getting more code enforcement complaints now than we have received typically. And so, we do need a balance, being responsive to those that are making the complaints with the needs of those that are receiving the complaints. I think we can, I think staff has already done this, I think we do this already, but I think we can even do it more, take not a heavy-handed approach. I think that's not our goal. The goal is to look for solutions and not for fines. So, if the council's okay with that approach, we'll continue to do that.
Maybe we should send them a letter and ask them to do what they can to comply with the code compliance. And when the people do call in, you might tell them we've, we're overwhelmed with everybody staying home with a lot of these complaints, and we'll put it on the list, and we'll get to it in the order that we receive, just like you do when you call in and they say, will you be, you won't lose your place in line, but we'll address it as we have time to address that item, so that it will relax it a little bit, and they understand why.
Counsel, I've been happy with the way the city's been handling it. We've, I'm sure you have, like I have, had many conversations with the city manager, talking about all these various issues of who should stay open, who should not be open, and what people are doing. I'm comfortable with keeping it the way it is and letting it stay the course, but I don't know how you feel. Thoughts on this?
All way in. I think city staff does an excellent job in weighing what's fair, because it's one thing for somebody to file a code compliance complaint. It's another thing for a business that's trying to do their very best to survive.
Yeah, I would have to agree with the mayor and Councilman Goble. I think the city's doing a good job having that balance in the approach during these really crazy times. So, I think you keep moving forward, Graham, with code compliance in the way that you have it.
Just as a reminder, we, our first warning actually is a letter. It's not even a citation. It really is a letter. We'll continue that process, and I think we just need to be sensitive to the circumstances.
Anybody else need to weigh in on this? Gary?
Yes. I really like the idea of easing up on the regulations regarding the banners, because I think it's important that the restaurants that are still open for takeout can put up their banners that open for takeout. That's a really big deal. It could make the difference between a business surviving and not surviving. And I've read that there's some restaurants in San Diego County, the way they're surviving is they're like grocery stores now. If they're going to have some supplies coming in from their suppliers, and maybe they need to sell, you know, avocados and meats that are, and other things that are kind of hard to get in the regular grocery stores, and they're smaller so they'll be less crowded. So, if our ordinance allows it, maybe they can put up a banner that says "Now Selling Groceries." I think it's important we do what we can to help the people stay in business.
Okay. Well, Graham, so you've heard from everybody.
Yeah.
I think that overall feeling is that you're doing a good job. We like the way things are going. We'd like to keep abreast of things on a pretty quick basis if you start seeing changes in the circumstances. But, and I'm sure the council will quickly weigh in if we see something happening that we feel is untoward. But for right now, it seems like I like your plan. I like the way you've approached it. I like the way the police and the fire department are approaching things, and the recreation department. And so, keep moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and council members Goble and Kendrick and Ortiz, would you like to weigh in on your suggestions at this time?
All in on the resolution that Councilman Kendrick and I are sponsoring. Although most landlords are probably fighting tenants being able to pay rent and, I have seen instances where landlords have increased rent, perhaps to make up for those that might be falling under, which is not a good strategy at all. So, it's not an ordinance, it's not an urgency ordinance, it's just a statement of belief through a resolution that we ask landlords not to raise rent for the next two months while residents are getting their stimulus and support checks. But by the same time, we don't want landlords going out of business and being foreclosed on. That just reduces the housing supply in El Cajon. So, we are urging tenants who might feel the stress of making a payment to contact their landlord before the rent comes due, before there's a problem. So, our resolution is a statement of belief on both sides. Landlords, help out the tenants, and tenants communicate with your landlord.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll add a little bit to that. I've been a landlord for about 40 years. And landlords are in the rental business, not in the vacancy business. So, I actually think it's a really bad idea to raise rent right now. It's not good business sense. So, I'm trying to discourage landlords from doing that. And again, also, a lot of landlords are just mom-and-pop operations. It's really helpful if the tenants let the landlords know as soon as possible that if they can't pay all the rent or can't pay any other rent, it's really to everybody's benefit to work together on this, landlords and tenants.
Okay.
Okay. Well, let me, let me sum up, let me conclude with...
Can I say something real quick?
Before you went, finish, Graham. I wanted to...
Oh, yeah. It looks like Mr. Ortiz would like to speak too.
Cassel, please go ahead.
Thanks. So, yeah, we created this survey to go out to all of the East County Chamber members, which are, and most of them are small businesses. And we've actually joined forces with other East County chambers as well to get more, the survey out into more business owners' email boxes. It went out today. So, if you're a business owner and you're listening, please go to our East County Chamber website and fill it out, just to get a pulse on how we're doing. On top of that, I know that there's another business organization, the Lincoln Club, is working with a couple of county supervisors to come up with a committee to, when the economy opens up, what does that look like? So, we're encouraging feedback through, reaching out to the businesses to show solidarity and support, to say, hey, let's get some feedback to our policymakers. When we do open up the economy, what does that look like? So, if there is feedback in that respect too, you know, what are the, what does that look like? So, we've had a huge response in the survey already. It went out today, and I think we had over 200 responses in an hour or so. So, I haven't looked at the data, but I'll be bringing
Thanks, Phil. Are you done? All right, so hard here. Graham, the one thing I wanted to ask you about, for the food and security issue, and the reason I brought that up was, I remember when I was a college kid and I was waiting tables, if I went probably three days without going to work, I'd run out of money. And I think that it's pretty common for younger people to be living from paycheck to paycheck, or even tip night to tip night if they're in that kind of an industry. And I would just worry about them having one good meal a day. I think that they're not going to lose their apartments. They're not going to probably have their cars repossessed, but there may not be enough money to buy a decent meal. So, that's what we had talked about, and you've got some ideas about that. Do you have any concept of how much that might cost, you know, on a per-week basis to provide that kind of assistance?
So, we had actually a committee that looked at a lot of different options, and they ranged from restaurant vouchers, so that would help keep restaurants in business and also provide a meal. But there's an administrator, it's not easy to administer a program like that. a program like that. Second is, it won't go far. So if you were allocating $100,000 and it's costing $7.50 a meal, that goes pretty quickly. And so we also looked at us just contracting with someone to do meals on their own. We have some folks in town that have that capacity. I think at the end of the day, we know that organizations like the Salvation Army and the Food Bank are able to take a few dollars and spread those dollars out much further than we probably could as a government agency. And so in our minds, it probably made sense to utilize the existing infrastructure that exists, or the current infrastructure that exists, allocate money to them and ensure that that money's being used in Ocahome to augment or to expand what they're currently doing in Ocahome.
A good example of that is East County Transitional Living Center. I think they've shaved their cost of the 500,000 meals they serve every year to about 17 cents a meal. That's because they do it in such volume and they have a whole list of partners that donate to their food drive every day. But the concept's still the same. There's probably no way that we could provide a meal for less than $10 a meal, whereas an organization like you're talking about may be able to provide it for $2 or $3 per meal. So I agree with that. As long as it doesn't get lost into the, to the black hole of need that's there for people that are chronically homeless. And it's not that I don't want to help those people. We're helping those people in many, many ways. But I want to specifically acknowledge the working poor right now, the people that normally would not access any kind of program, but maybe for the six weeks or 12 weeks or 15 weeks that are left in this, they have need for one meal a day. And so do you think there's a way we could do that? We could make sure that those people aren't lost in the shovel?
We think so. And we think that's the majority of individuals that are currently accessing the existing food programs in our community after talking with them. We would not recommend allocating all the funding that we're going to propose to one organization. We'd actually recommend spreading it out to several organizations. And I think we should go as far to have a contract with some expectations of what we want that money to be used for. And so there's probably not time to revisit this meeting after meeting after meeting. Because it'd be difficult for any of these organizations to ensure that the folks that are receiving this food would be CDBG eligible, I'm actually recommending that this pot of money come out of the general fund. It'll just make it easier to do. If the council, as part of your feedback tonight or direction, you could give me direction, just a contract with agencies and report back to you, rather than bring back a contract with these different agencies. My fear is we could spend a lot of time doing typical government bureaucracy and not getting money out there.
Well, I don't know about the rest of the council. My feeling is I would like to direct you just to do it, get it done. The council may want to put some parameters on that. Is that something we could decide tonight?
I think so. And when I get to my recommendations right now, I think we can go through one by one. And that's where you can give me some specific feedback of, you like it, you don't like it, how do you want us to administer that? What are some parameters for that? I think that's the time to do that.
All right. Well, why don't we go through those recommendations and then the council could weigh in on each one?
Okay. If we go to the next slide. So about six of the proposals or suggestions that we've made really have nominal fiscal impact. Sewer billing delay, not a big impact. Free online rec programming, not a big impact. We think promoting our food opportunities is just a matter of ensuring that the data's out there. Our business outreach effort using existing staff, softening code enforcement on banners. I'd like to point out, we've not done any code enforcement on banners since the outbreak has occurred. And then transportation services for homeless, we don't think that's expensive. We don't know how much that is, so it's hard for us to really say. But these are sort of all really low-hanging, cheap opportunities, I shouldn't say cheap, but inexpensive things that we as a city can do to benefit our community. And we think it can have some significant impacts. If we go to the next slide, this is where the more money is. We've identified eight different programs and we've broken that up into whether it would be general-funded, whether it would be funded through CARES, federal money, or some other source. We think that if we allocated $300,000 for utility assistance and $200,000 for rapid rehousing rental assistance, this really gets to those that are on the bubble of potentially becoming homeless. And I think that's a, for staff, that's a big priority. And I think that's where the majority of your CARES funds should probably go to, with some general fund money towards the food to seniors program. We would then also recommend that $250,000 be allocated for additional homeless shelter. And that would be split up amongst various organizations to really meet our ultimate need. We would not recommend putting the money all in one item. For example, we'd only recommend probably a few motel vouchers. We'd probably recommend some money for the parking lot. And we'd contract with an existing homeless shelter provider for some guaranteed spaces. The other recommended programs, like the discounted rec program, Frank Carson's currently working on some, maybe some funding for that into the future. We have time to work on that. Waiving business license, late fees and sewer late fees, we don't really know what that fiscal impact will be. Most businesses pay their business license already, so there's not a lot of new coming in. So that's probably nominal, but a little bit unknown. But we're really looking for council recommendations on these big items and also those other less expensive items as well. We can go back and forth through that list. And then just to conclude, we're looking for feedback on these. We would recommend the implementation of these programs and the recommendation, we would recommend that the council consider the resolution presented by council members Goble and Kendrick. So with that, staff's here to take any feedback and direction.
I have a question. Are we able to, you know, with the utility assistance, the rapid rehousing rental assistance, are we able to put conditions on this to make sure that they're, the money that we're handing out is going to be directly given to the residents that are in need? If we end up contracting with a nonprofit to facilitate it, I don't want it to go to admin costs. I want it to go to, as much money as possible to go directly to our residents that are on the bubble and, you know, losing their housing.
That's a good question. As you recall, when we do our homeless programming, we allocate almost 100% of it, and I can't say 100%, but as much of it as we can to actual programs. If you look at other programs administered by the state or through the regional task force on homelessness, that's not the case. A lot of it goes for admin. We would expect that some of this money does have to cover some admin costs. There's going to be some costs to administer these programs. But one of the things that we'll be doing is we have a conversation with these organizations is to get a real good comfort that they understand that we expect at least 90% of this money to go to the public, with very little going towards overhead. And we do think that 10% is probably an accurate amount of money that is justifiable to overhead. In fact, I mean, a lot of federal contracting is between 12% to 20%. We'd like to push organizations to 10%.
Personally, I think that's reasonable. Phil?
Is there any way to direct any of this money to the Alcohan Transitional Living Center because of the fact that they aren't able to go out and work in the community right now? They're pretty well locked down, so they have no income coming in basically. They still have expenses with their utilities and everything. And their meal costs are practically nil. But if we could give them a portion of this funding, it would really help them get through this period that they really need assistance. And also the Salvation Army. They've got a really good food bank and use a lot of volunteers. The labor costs are practically nil for both of these organizations. So it would be my direction to try and give some of this money to both of those organizations, because I know that they really watch their pennies very closely. So that would be my recommendation.
So first of all, because this is CDBG money, we do have to go through HUD regulations. So we just can't right now decide we want money for here, here, and here. But we can clearly reach out to those that are currently working with us. ECTLC has been a long-term partner. We would expect them to continue to be a partner with us on this. And we certainly could allocate money for them for shelter. I'd like to point out that they still, they have a contract with us to do trash pickup throughout the city. That's an essential service. So they still are operating under that contract right now. So we're grateful for that. But that's clearly one of our recommended partner organizations. Depending on the feedback we get from the city council this afternoon, they'll be one of the entities we call.
One of their big sources of income is the pottery games and things like that and going out in the community and doing other things. And they just can't do that right now. So it would really, I would really like to see them get a good stipend.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to help them with that specifically, but we could rent shelter space from them, which would be an eligible allocation of these funds.
Hey, Graham, I have no problem with them getting part of this. I think they've shown to be good partners. I just want to say one thing is that we have a tendency sometimes in government to have multiple goals. And sometimes you get stuck on one of those goals and then the whole operation gets delayed by six weeks or six months. I don't think we have time for that.
Well, we are going to be delayed by four weeks, because in order to amend the FY-1920 CDBG action plan, we're required to do public noticing. And those federal regulations won't allow us to get to the next meeting. So what we would recommend is if whatever feedback's given today, we could have everything ready to go for a public hearing, the first meeting of May, and we could issue contracts the day after. That would be our goal.
We could do the general fund food programs.
We can do the general fund stuff immediately. But the HUD or the CARES-related programs, that will have to wait about a month before this money gets on the street.
All right. Gentlemen, more comments?
Yeah, I've got a question. Is this CARES Act money, use it or lose it?
Yes. And it could only really be related to COVID-19-related impacts. So if we were to bank it and use it for capital improvement, we would not be able to use that. And so we won't be getting a check. We'll actually be expending and then submitting reimbursement. So, yeah, that's a good question.
Are we able to allocate some of the money to people who applied for CDBG money and either didn't get any or increased what they got?
If they fit within the parameters of what we've already talked about. So for example, there was one organization that didn't receive any funding. They had applied for the first time. We don't think that that would be eligible, because there's not a direct COVID-19-related issue with that.
What's the impact, for instance, if you increase the allotment to meals on wheels?
Yes, that would be a possibility.
Does that set a precedent that next year, because they got extra, it creates a problem next year?
I don't know if it would set an expectation, just because this is one-time money and this won't be coming back again next year.
Okay. My final question is, do you have a sense of how many homeless people might be getting $1,200 stimulus check?
What's that?
Do you have a sense of how many homeless people, people transients or people who are homeless, might be getting $1,200 stimulus checks?
Well, if, I know if they've submitted taxes, yes, they'll be receiving it. I don't know what percentage of our homeless population has. And I know there's a way for individuals that have not applied or paid taxes or filed a tax return to register. What percentage? I don't know. So the answer is no, I don't know. But I know there is a way to do that.
Okay. I'll save the rest of my comments for the council when we decide on how we allocate this money.
I have a question. When Bill speaks, and this microphone, it's not, here's clear as it is on Graham's microphone. Maybe we could get a new microphone for Bill, because it sounds real garbled, the way I'm hearing it.
We think this mic at the podium just picks up better. So I'll ask the mayor to speak up.
I will. Counsel, any more comments on this?
I do. This is Gary. Couple of comments. First of all, because East County Transitional Living Center is so incredibly efficient, I'd like to see them a major player in this as much as possible. And the second is, I've known many of the staff members for 20 years that have complete confidence that they'll make the right decision. So I'd like to give the city manager as much responsibility as possible for allocating this money. I don't want to have us haggling over it and delaying things. I'd rather see him just make the decision and it's quick and cuts out all the red tape, the bureaucracy. And that's it.
I agree with Gary. The only one concern I have is on the additional shelter core million. I would like the city staff to be mindful. We don't necessarily want to create programs that become a magnet for people outside the city.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So I think you're smart enough to know we don't want to become a magnet.
Right. I trust Graham to make that decision. I think he's very well aware of that issue.
Okay. So is council okay with the recommendations that we presented thus far with the parameters that you've given?
This is Gary. I am.
Yeah, I am with the caveat that we just expressed.
Yeah, I'm happy with the plan. Thank you, Graham, and all the staff that put in the extra time to make sure we're addressing our citizens' needs at this time. I think it's a huge, huge boost. And I think it's going to go a long way.
I am with the Transitional Living Center and the Salvation Army getting a good stipend, because they do an excellent job at very minimal cost.
So with that, I would recommend that the council adopt the resolution that's before you this evening. And I don't think you need to take a vote on the feedback, because we have to bring most of that back anyway. And there's a public comment, by the way, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, great. So before we get to the public comment, you don't need to vote on this?
Well, I'd recommend you take public comment first and then we can come back to the vote part.
All right. Let's do the public comment, please.
This comment is from Mohammed Tuama. In reference to the high COVID-19 infection numbers in the city of Ocahome, can the city provide the residents with some detail about the local outbreaks and clusters, or at least why the numbers are increasing?
Can you repeat that again?
In reference to the high COVID-19 infection numbers in the city of Ocahome, can the city provide the residents with some detail about the local outbreaks and clusters, or at least why the numbers are increasing?
You know, I think I'll ask our fire chief to answer that question. Graham, would you like to take that?
Let me take a quick stab at that. First of all, we do have high numbers, but there's a couple of things going on. We currently have 113 cases, or we have had at least since the commencement, 113 cases in the city. We know that over 50 of those cases are at one convalescent home. So about almost half of the cases are at one location. We also know that 12 of them are at a convalescent home or a location that is outside the city limits. So that's almost 10% that are currently outside of the city limits. And we think that the number is actually higher, because we continue to find additional clusters as they get reported to us outside the city limits. We, the county health department is the agency that has the ability to disseminate the specific information that Mr. Tuama's requested. It's not our information to disseminate. We wish we could do that. We do know that we are setting up with the county a town hall specifically for our Arabic-speaking community. for our Arabic-speaking community. And those would be really good questions specifically for county health officials that will be on that town hall.
I think that's a good answer to the question. Thanks, Graham. Are there any more questions?
No more comments, sir.
Okay, Graham, back to you.
So what we'd recommend is that the council consider for a vote, the adoption of the resolution that's included with the agenda, the agenda report. And then I think we've received enough feedback to actually implement what you've asked us to do.
Sounds good. Counsel, how do you feel about that?
I'd move that we adopt the recommendation.
Graham, do you want to vote on this?
Second.
Do you want to vote on this?
It doesn't hurt to vote, but you do need a vote specifically on the resolution, for sure.
Well, let's start with the resolution, then. Steve, this is your resolution. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll adopt the resolution.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Steve.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Perfect. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Let's vote. I vote yes.
Deputy Mayor Ortiz, your vote?
I vote yes.
Councilmember Goble?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendrick?
Yes.
Councilmember McClellan?
Yes.
Motion carries by unanimous vote.
That's great. Thank you. All right. And then the second part of that, for the financial assistance, I don't think he needs a vote on this. He just needs direction from the council. I think that it's going in the right direction. Counsel, are you comfortable with the direction that it's going? It'll come back to us at the beginning of next month to vote on it?
Yes.
I'm seeing shaking heads, Graham. Let's do this as fast as we can.
Okay, let's do it.
This is Gary. Yes.
Gary, go ahead.